Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would all silently say the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's served, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Supervisor. Trustee Bassinow?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey here. Supervisor done.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next on is the agenda approval. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additional items?
Madam Supervisor, there's one proposed add-on to the consent agenda, which is item number 6B, request for family and medical leave of absence for employee number 2416. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, could I ask that 7A be moved to the regular agenda and not consent for discussion?
Any others?
Madam Chair, I'll move 7A under the supervisor's office for reappointment to building authority to item number 14 on the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the corrections as presented.
Motion by Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Seconded by Ms. Posey.
No, that was Ms. Nevers. Trustee Nevers.
I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers to remove the item number eight from the consent and move it to item number 14. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have to call the roll call.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. Motion by Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. Next, we have approval of the bills. There are two bill runs as usual. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support by Oliver.
Seconded by Ms. Smith.
Trustee Oliver.
By Trustee Oliver instead to approve both bill runs as presented. Ms. Posey, call the roll.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries. Next, we'll have approval of the previous meeting minutes and the closed session minutes from June 24th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minute?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from June 24, 2020, and closed session meeting minutes from June 24, 2020. This is Clerk Posey.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the June 24th meeting minutes as presented and also the closed session meeting minutes. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor done.
Yes. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda items. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I make a motion to approve. Supported by Smith.
motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Supported by Smith.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have public comments. If you wish to speak this evening to the board, please state your name. And remember, you have a three-minute time limit.
If anyone wishes to speak, go ahead and raise your hand digitally. Right now, we have phone number ending in 1120. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Board. This is John Parkinson. I'd like to ask and address the issue of the ethics board. It's actually appalling and sickening that those of you who may or may not have violated ethics in the township don't want to put this board together. You guys can effectively work through COVID to do all this stuff that you're doing now, but you can't find a way to effectively put a board together. It's as simple as putting the information out, taking the applicants, and approving them. I'm very appalled as a resident, as a candidate, as a citizen. I'm concerned about corruption in the township. I've made my opinions known, and I think that you guys need to add this to the next meeting. And in fact, I'm not asking. I'm more telling you to, as a resident. I pay my taxes, and I want you to add this to the next meeting. You guys should be discussing this. There's no reason you shouldn't be. And like I said, I'm very appalled, and I would appreciate if you added to the next meeting and discuss it and get this thing rolling sooner than later. And I appreciate the time tonight. I yield the floor.
We have Frank Cusmano. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I am going to echo the sentiments of Mr. Parkinson that the Ethics Board needs to be put into place. It's in very bad taste and also politically unwise that to follow through on obligations to get ethics accordance with some. I'm also making public comment on this issue of how people have indicated how we can lower taxes. That that's somehow or another an impossibility. And one of the things I would propose is that Dino Bucci, in his own perverse twist and way, showed us how. By picking up a phone, Dino Bucci was able, in his own selfish way, expose a serious flaw in our purchasing policy and procedures. He was able to get the job done for $67,000 less on a couple hundred thousand dollar contract. And what he did with the money is appalling and illegal and criminal. But it shows what can happen where there is that competitive bidding taking place. And on that point, I would note that the board extended a bid to Luigi and Ferdinandi Cement Contractors without competitive bids. Did so as well on the garbage hauling contract. It extended the bid. It did that on June, I believe, in June of last year. I'm sorry, in April of last year. Item 16 on the April 10, 2019 agenda. Trustee Bassinow did vote no on that, but all the other board members voted yes. That contractor has received $8,022, 4784 on another bill run, $103,526. Then later on that month, $148,805. This bill run, they're receiving $189,727. So I guess we'll never know whether or not there was a bidder who would have come in at less money for that job. And that's the way we can save taxpayers' money, because money that we save, we don't have to raise through taxes. I thank you for the time to share my opinions and yield the floor.
Doesn't look like anybody else, Janet. Oh, wait. No, we do have somebody else. Kathy Western, go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. As you can tell by the number of candidates who speak, it's election season, and as we all get closer to the August primary, the residents are finding challenging to sort through the more than two dozen candidates for the seventh position, especially right now to campaign and to add. One of the candidates for a full-time elected position, Francesca Biando, during her campaign in Alexandria with the Chamber of Townships, described herself as the former deputy supervisor of McComb Township. And that seemed to be the bulk of her resume. Supervisor, you have it done. Perhaps this during your comments, could you comment on Ms. Biando's tenure with you as your deputy supervisor, given her sudden appearance in your office and her abrupt departure? Would be appreciated. Thank you.
No, I think we're good. Nobody else is raising their hand.
Very well. There's no one else. We will move on then to the public hearing. This is a public hearing for a resolution for street lighting special assessment district for the enclave at Legacy Estates Phase 1 and Phase 2. Mr. Van Tiflin, are you present?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Are they lots all owned by the developer?
Yes, this is a typical residential development that's required to have streetlights under the ordinance. And this is the public hearing to the special assessment district so that the streetlights can go in.
Very well. This is a public hearing. It is 7:14. Any of the board members wish to speak on this item? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience? Well, seeing no one, it is 7:16, and I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions or motions?
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I'd like to pass the resolution for the street lighting special assessment district for Enclave at Legacy Estates Phase 1 and 2.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. This resolution is adopted. Under new business, we have an engineering department request to approve a pathway advance for 52800 Card Road. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, ma'am. Chairperson, board members. The property owner of this particular piece of property is into the township right now for a parcel split. His intention is to, once the property is split, to build two houses on the property. At this point, it would not make sense for him to install the sidewalk, because it would be probably damaged during the home construction. Sidewalks are normally required by the township when parcels are split or combined. So the property owner's into us for an advance that would give the township an insurance policy in case those houses weren't built and we wanted that gap filled in. We could call it at any time. But I believe that this is going to be subject to a couple of home constructions here very soon. So we are recommending approval of the advance. You have any answering questions?
Thank you. This is fairly routine. They do, we do these periodically. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I'll make the motion to request to approve pathway advance for 52800 Card Road, parcel number 08-141001.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Support by Nevers.
One at a time, please.
Support by Nevers.
Pardon?
Seconded by Nevers.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve the pathway advance. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. Thank you. And the next item is a request to award construction materials testing for the 2020 pathway gap closure program. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, board members. At the last board meeting, the township board awarded the 2020 pathway gap closure program. That construction is set to begin here within days. We now need to select the materials testing firm that will make sure that the materials that are placed are proper and meet the township's specifications. We obtained proposals from engineering firms that do that. Tonight, we're recommending that testing engineers and consultants be awarded the contract and their estimate for the work that will be done by their firm at $17,980. We're recommending a word tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments or motions?
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I'll make a motion to award the construction materials testing to testing engineers and consultants for the 2020 pathway gap closure program in the amount of $17,980.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Clerk Posey, seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to award the construction materials testing. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor done.
Yes. This motion is carried. Next, we have authorization to extend an offer of employment in the Elections Department. This is under Human Resources. Mr. Sardi?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. In January 2020, the Human Resources Department was authorized to initiate the recruitment process for an elections supervisor with the vacancy of that position. Our department has posted that position in accordance with the collective bargaining agreements in place. We've received one qualified applicant for the position. That applicant is currently employee number 2410. She met all the appropriate qualifications, and therefore, we're asking for a motion to approve the promotion of employee 2410 to the positions of elections supervisor effective tomorrow.
Thank you. Any questions? Very well. Any motions?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I will make the motion to authorize to extend the offer of employment of elections supervisor to employee 2410.
Is that Ms. Goodhue?
Trustee Smith.
Ms. Goodhue, I will support it. Karen Goodhue, support.
Motion by Ms. Smith, seconded by Ms. Goodhue to extend the offer of employment for elections supervisor. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. That motion carries. And the Fire Department has a request to promote a probationary firefighter, Keith Phillips.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm recommending this evening the promotion of probationary firefighter Anthony Poma, who had successfully completed his 12-month probationary period. Is recommended for promotion to paid-on-call firefighter by the Probationary Development Committee and myself. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, or motions?
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I make a motion that we promote probationary firefighter Anthony Poma.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Supported by Smith.
Sorry.
Supported by.
Supported by Smith.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the promotion as recommended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. Congratulations to the new firefighter. We will move on now to the treasurer's office. And this is the Oakland McComb Intercepter Drain Extension and Improvement Project Assessment Roll Number 1. Ms. Goodhue, you put this on the agenda? Did you want to speak to it?
Yes, please. I received a letter on June 22 that they are going to start a program or a project to fix the Oakland McComb Intercepter. And all of the communities that are serviced by it, which we are one, are going to be asked to help pay for the bonds on that. It's an $84 million bond. Our portion is $7,842,753.36 if we decide to prepay. We need to pass a resolution to either prepay or make this an installment. After having a meeting with Mr. Van Tiflin, Mr. Wanglin, Ms. Smith, and the analyst, Don Blun, we saw all the factors and saw all of the different projects that are in the capital improvement plan and water and sewers plans in the future. And I also thought that the rest of the board members should receive the same information that we did, because there's a lot of different pieces to the puzzle to this and a lot of different factors as to whether we prepay or whether we make the payments. So I asked for each of the board members to come in to find out the same information. They graciously accepted and came in and watched the information so that we could make an informed decision tonight that the board has to make in order to either prepay or make this an installment. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to either approve the prepayment or deny the prepayment and do the installments.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Did you say early on that this was a resolution?
This is a resolution. There are two separate resolutions. The clerk's office has them. They will be able to fill in the appropriate amounts and the appropriate decisions that the board decides on.
Thank you. Mr. Sardi, do we have to do the resolution separately?
There is only one resolution. We only need to make one. We either approve the prepayment or deny the prepayment.
Okay. All right. Madam Chair, this is.
This is Mr. Oliver. I got a quick question for Mrs. Goodhue. And thank you for inviting me to that meeting. That was very, very informative. But clearly, we have to pay this bill. Tonight, the key mechanism is how we're going to pay it. Either we're going to write a check or we're going to make payments.
Correct.
But the bill, there's no debating this bill. The bill's not going away. We're responsible. It's our portion, and we're on the hook for it. Right?
Correct. Correct, yes.
I want to make that clear and clear to the public, too, that there's no negotiating. This is what was presented to us. Tonight, again, a matter of just how we're going to pay it. That's right?
And I have, yes. And I have to say that the Drain Commission did apologize for the short notice, because we do have to give them an answer by July 22. That's why it is on this agenda, because the next board meeting is the 22. So, because they have to do a lot of preplanning as well.
I understand. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is, yeah, this is Trustee Bassinow. Karen, I just wanted to add that if we choose to go into installments, that is going to be through the sales of bonds, correct? Is that important to know that?
Well, yeah, they're selling bonds. They're selling the bonds. And we need to make the payment, our portion of the payment to the bonds. That's why they need to know this.
Okay.
We're not selling bonds. They are.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I got another question. Trustee Oliver? Can I ask Ms. Goodhue a question? Ms. Goodhue, can you explain to the public? It sounds easy just to say, okay, we might have enough money just to write a check. But could you explain how we would deplete some of our cash money in the event that we would have maybe a water crisis or a sewer crisis, and we'd use up. And we'd use up, then we use up more of our cash. Can you go through that with the public, please?
Right. Right. In looking at the capital improvement plans that Water and Sewer has, it's either four or five. They have it planned out, different things that they are going to be needing to, to fix. And that money is allocated for those different capital improvement plans. If we decide to pay out this whole amount upfront, it would deplete that amount. We don't know with the new board coming on and we, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball so we can't see into the future as to what the rates are, if we're going to be able to maintain the rates on the water. It also affects our credit rating. It deplete, you know, depletes us right down. So it was suggested at the meeting that we not prepay it and make the installments instead. I know we've done a couple of other projects with the Drain Commission and we did prepay a couple of other ones. This one is quite large and it would deplete our fund quite a bit and, and affect the capital improvement plans that the Water and Sewer have in line for our township that we're responsible for.
So if I understand this right, I'm just doing some quick math there. And if, if we go with the bond that, that the county's already gotten, all right, we're just going to make the payments. The, it appears that the interest is approximately 2.25 on the money that, that we'd be borrowing. And approximately, we'd be paying just under $100,000 a year in interest. So that's kind of some of my math. Is that what you were looking at too, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
We'd have 21 installments going out to 2041. And over that period of time, it looks like it would be about $2.5 million in interest over that period of time.
Correct. But, but the key is we'd be saving our capital in case of emergency.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Clerk Posey. I just wanted to bring up a few items from the presentation as well. First, I just want to clarify, Karen, in your, when you first spoke, you said that they asked us to participate. It, they're not asked us to participate. It's a requirement, correct?
Well, they, they asked us to, they would like us to prepay. That, that's more or less. No, we have to, we have to participate. Yes, you're correct.
Right. Okay, so it is a requirement. And, and what, something that we looked at in the presentation was that if we decided at a later date, say in two years, that we wanted to bond the money, bond this amount, what happens is over the next two years, we have these capital improvement projects already anticipated, which is going to deplete our cash fund in the Water and Sewer Department. So right now, if we choose to go in and take the installment, we're at a better, we'll have a better rate at getting a bond, a better opportunity of getting the bond versus in a few years when we significantly deplete that fund with projects anticipated. So that was something they brought up as well, is that if we are going to go the path of installment, it's better to do it now than later because of the anticipated projects we have coming. Also, in the packet, just so board members are aware, it says that they anticipate a third bond issue for an estimated $15 million in or about the summer of 2021. That for McComb Township will be in the year 2021, approximately $1,415, or 100, $1,415,160. So we have to keep that mind, in mind as well. We might be in a stronger position to prepay that bond issue next year and do installments for the 8 million. So just keep that in mind when you're making your decision that we're going to come across this again in '21. But for a significantly less amount.
Right, and we, and we don't know whenever they're going to, this was a surprise. We didn't anticipate this one. So we never know. They're look at, they're looking at their infrastructure as well as us, you know, as to what's coming in, in the future. We don't know. So we can't just, like you said, deplete our funds down to, you know, for this amount.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we deny the prepayment of the amount for the drain, the Oakland County Drain, Oakland McComb Interceptor Drain.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
And supported by Nevers.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve this request. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Hold on. Madam Chair, Charlie Oliver again. Your request is to deny payment all at once and to make the payments. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that's the 20, right now, that's the 21-year payment, right?
Yes. We are denying the full prepayment amount of $7,842,075.36 and going with the installments instead.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yeah.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor done.
Yes. This resolution-
That resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to board comments. We'll start with trustees.
Madam Chair, we have item number 14 that was moved from consent to new business.
I'm sorry, I forgot. That was-
The reappointment to the building authority?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
It was the reappointment to the building authority under you?
Yes. Yes, I totally forgot about that one. Okay, the, the appointment is by statute and that does say that it's from, the positions for the commission are in the Articles of Incorporation. So changing the bylaws doesn't fix anything. From what I understand, Act 31 of 148, it says that a board member cannot be on the authority. So in this case, I would recommend that we stick with the, the present member, Mr. DeCaro. And if you have any questions, now is the time to come forth.
Madam Chair, this is Karen Goodhue. I have, I have no trouble with the, the reappointment because you are correct. A board member can be on the building authority. Just for the purpose of the public, I just want to say that the perp, and the other board members who may not know, is the purpose of the Building Authority Act is, among other things, to provide for the incorporation of authorities to acquire, furnish, equip, own, improve, enlarge, operate, and maintain buildings, parking lots or structures, and recreational facilities. My comments are, is this building authority bylaw, they were adopted in 1998 and amended in 2001. And I think a lot of things have changed since then. For one thing, they are really stressing separation of duties and a lot of double checks, you know, checks and balances on different accounts. We know that from what, when we do our audit. The present commissioners on there are the deputy clerk and the finance director and also the park and rec director. That, this was established when we had Park and Rec was being built. So I'm assuming that's why they put that commissioner on there. I am just asking possibly for a committee to update these bylaws and this authority. I'm thinking in the act, it says for the incorporation of authorities. And it would make sense to me, a lot of the bills, I, I know, talking to Ms. Smith, they, this authority gets, or this commission gets together to pay the bills. It would make sense to me. Right now, I think they're paying a lot of the public safety building bills. And it would make sense to me to have a fire chief on that commission. So I would like to ask for a committee at this time to look into establishing another authority or several authorities for each of the buildings so that the person that is involved in that would, would be able to have some say. And also to look at possibly having the deputy treasurer instead of the deputy clerk and the finance director. So there's checks and balances in that. I want to look into what other communities have on their building authorities and see if the law has been amended or changed. Because like I said, this is nearly 20 years old. So that is what I'm asking for tonight. And I took this opportunity in this appointment to bring this up to, to the board and see what their suggestions are.
Anyone else have any comments on this request? Very well. Are there any-
Madam, Madam Chair, I do have, the, you mentioned the fire chief. He approves and recommends payment of all the bills that go through the public safety building. So he is a check and balance with that regard. But he's the one that recommends the approval of a bill to the board before it gets paid.
Okay. But there's always the check and balance between treasury and finance as well. And we, we don't have that here.
Sure. I, I mean, I didn't establish the board. So I mean, if, if you want to make a committee to change that, that's fine. But you have to go through the Articles of Incorporation to do that, which is complicated. A committee just can't change the bylaws. It has to be changed at a state level as well and a county level.
Well, I was, do we have, can we at least have a committee check to see if there's not been any amendments? I can't believe that the state isn't allowing for checks and balances in this type of an account.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not indicating that.
It's never been a problem before, but it could be a potential problem. I just would like to find out, have a committee. I don't want to do it on my own because that doesn't look right. So I was asking for a board of the committee, or a committee of the board to check with other communities if they have multiple authorities, one for each function that their project that they're doing. Also, you know, how their checks and balances are.
Mr. Sardi, can you comment, can you provide us with any insight on, on it? I mean, can you give some direction to the board as to how that, I mean, don't the bylaws, if, if the bylaws were to be changed, doesn't it have to go through, be changed at the state and county level as well?
No, there's no state or county level. There'd be a proper, you could have a meeting, the, the articles be revised, just like any other corporate entity. Same with the bylaws. They would just need to be filed with the state, which is just a simple, you know, click of a button to include the, to include the new articles. If, if, if the board chose to, if the current board chose to modify what was there, the articles.
Okay.
But nothing, nothing keep, under that statute, nothing keeps the township from establishing more than one authority.
And was there, does anybody, was there a reason that there was only three on that authority to begin with? Was there any rhyme or reason to why they were selected?
No, nobody knows. That's why it's, it's 20 years old. That's why I'd like to have a committee investigate it, you know, to see if there's been, I know it's been amended. It was incorporated in 1998 and amended in 2001. That's still approximately 20 years ago. So I just would like to have another, you know, I think it's, you know, it's the right thing to do is to, every once in a while, look at these things and update them. And basically, that's what I would like a committee to look at, to see that it's still in line if there's been any changes in the Appropriations Act at all. Like I said, they have incorporated a lot of checks and balances in a lot of the things that we do. And this doesn't have a lot of checks and balances. So that's why I just was thinking about, you know, changing, you know, looking at it at least and then seeing what other communities are doing as well.
And Ms. Goodhue, this is, Nevers responding. If you would put that in the form of a motion, I will support it.
Motion. Motion by-
Uh- What's that? Ms. Posey? Madam Chair, at first, I, we have to address the agenda items, which is to, whether, whether or not to reappoint Sal DeCaro to the building authority, term to expire June 30th, 2023. And then I think you can address forming a committee after that.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we do, do the reappointment of Mr. DeCaro to the building authority.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Supported by Smith.
Supported by Ms. Smith to reappoint Mr. DeCaro to the building authority. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
No.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trust, uh, Clerk Posey, yes, and supervisor done.
Yes. That motion carries. Now we will move on to trustee's comments.
Oh, Ms.-
Madam Chair-
Madam, yeah, I was not-
Treasurer Goodhue wanted to, to add something to that. If you, Karen, now would be the time.
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to ask the board to approve a committee to, to update or look at the bylaws for the building authority.
Very well.
And I will support that. Nancy Nevers?
Motion by Ms. Goodhue, seconded by Ms. Nevers to appoint a committee of board members to review the building authority.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassinow?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and supervisor done.
Yes. This motion carries.
Madam Chair, should people contact you to volunteer for that committee?
No, no one has contacted me.
No, no, no. I said should they. If they're interested, if a member of the board is interested in being on that committee, should they contact you?
That would be good. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move on to trustee comments. Ms. Nevers, do you have anything this evening?
Yes, I do. During our last board meeting, there was a lengthy discussion regarding the illegal installation of a software program by the clerk on her township computer. The installation was against our internet policy and that policy is clear and unambiguous. The penalty could be up to and including discharge. Now, I don't want to revisit that entire discussion, but I do want to address the roll call vote to have a forensic audit done, which would have ensured there was no cybersecurity breach of anyone's data. That vote, in my opinion, should have been unanimous- there was no cybersecurity breach of anyone's data. That vote, in my opinion, should have been unanimous, seven-zero. However, it was a four-three vote against the audit. I would have thought every board member would have wanted to send a clear message to our residents that their data was safe and had not been breached. Sadly, that did not happen, and I find that quite disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Madam Chair, um, regarding what Ms. Nevers just said, um, I looked into some information after that meeting also. Um, I actually had to listen to the meeting again because the Zoom, it can be very hard to hear everyone. I guess my question to Ms. Nevers is that CPI said that there was no virus, no malware, um, no credit card information was at risk, no election information was at risk, and that there was no data breach whatsoever. My other question is though, that I listened back to, um, that was, God, I don't have my, in, in October of eighteen, I think that's when they said that happened. But yet, I did hear CPI said that she had talked to, um, Janet, and I think she said Mr. Authority, and that they were satisfied with what CPI said. But she also said, um, that there was a Josh Bailey from M1 Discovery, and I don't know if that's exactly the name, that's what I heard, that did another forensic audit, and I think in, on twelve-three of eighteen, and she never received the report. So that would be a third forensic audit if, if, or a second audit if I reading this or listening back to the minutes from last time. So I guess someone, I don't, I don't know who, I mean, maybe someone can tell me, who requested that second audit? And who is, um, Josh Bailey from M1 Discovery, and does anyone have that report? Because that might be beneficial to us.
Thank you. Mr. Bucenow?
I have no comments tonight, Madam Chair.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes, I got a couple of quick ones. Uh, I feel the same way as, uh, on this CPI thing. It, it was very cleared off that, uh, nothing was compromised. It wasn't even in, in the arena to be compromised, but yet it, it got exposed like it was compromised, and, and I think that is wrong, how it got exposed out, because, uh, nothing ever happened, and it happened in eighteen. And if it was that big of a deal in eighteen, it should have run, it should have been dealt with in eighteen. Uh, I would love to see this thing go, the, it, it seems like it should be put to bed, to bed because, uh, uh, nobody's information was compromised, period. Okay, that's enough on that. Uh, another brighter thing I want to talk about is, um, I just want to recognize, uh, Josh Brock and, uh, Dave Schudel. He, they, them two guys are new, uh, planning people that we hired in. They got kind of hired in at probably the worst time and, uh, that anyone could get hired in. Uh, we ended up, uh, starting to closing the township building. Uh, these guys had to get started and kind of do everything on Zoom and, uh, on the phone, and it had to be pretty tough for them. But, uh, I got to compliment them. They, they really got things together. We had our la, we had a, a planning meeting last night. The planning commission is, um, uh, doubling up on some meetings, and, uh, it, it, it is really starting to gel together. Uh, so I'm, I'm really confident that, uh, our planning department is in great hands, and I think, uh, the planning department and the co, planning commission, uh, are all working together real nice. And I, and I also want to thank the employees and staff that welcomed and helped Dave and Josh get started. Uh, that, that shows a lot for our staff here. And, um, they're doing a great job now, and I think we're, uh, the planning department is well on its way. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Treasurer's comments. Ms. Goodhue?
Yes. Um, the summer bills all went out on Ja, July first, and we have been receiving a lot of telephone calls asking, because there is quite a significant, uh, increase in everybody's tax bills. And I just want to explain that this was from a millage that the Macomb Intermediate School District put on the presidential primary election in March, and it won by twelve, only by only twelve percent. But it added, um, it's a ten, to explain it, it's a ten-year, one-point-nine-mill enhancement millage for the public schools in Macomb County. So every, uh, municipality in Macomb County voted on this, and it was passed. Um, it is not just Macomb Township. These are school taxes on your summer bills. Macomb Township is merely the, uh, collecting agency. And we have been receiving, um, quite a few phone calls that, um, attacked my staff and myself, and comments at the counter when people are paying, and it is quite upsetting. So I just want to, um, explain that this millage is an enhancement bill, millage to, uh, serve the twenty-two school districts under the Macomb Intermediate School District. They will be receiving these funds, and what they do with them is up to them. I did put a link on the, um, Treasurer's webpage, and that you can go and check out what the millage was passed, uh, you know, what the millage, uh, is for, and have an explanation on that. Um, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this is not a Macomb Township millage. It is a, it's a school millage for the Macomb Intermediate School District. And also, um, I want to let you know that there are similar millages in a lot of the communities, in Oakland County and Wayne County as well. So Macomb Township is not the only one. Um, and in fact, in Macomb Township, this, uh, millage was passed by only seven-hundred-and-ninety votes. So it goes to show you that your votes do count, and, um, it's important to vote at every election that there is, um, to be aware, um, of what is on there. Uh, and I hope this explains a lot for, to people. And, um, I have had some pleasant conversations with residents as well that do understand, but, uh, we are happy to explain things to them. So, uh, if you still want to call, uh, I just want to, uh, make sure that you're understanding. Thank you.
Clerk's comments. Ms. Posey?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'd just like to, um, refer back to, uh, trustee Nevers' comments. Um, the message was sent, trustee Nevers, by the IT expert Beth Case, who adamantly indicated that there was no cyber breach of security. However, uh, you choose to not listen to the expert of whom you've adamantly supported and praised for four years. Now you're questioning her ability to provide an expert opinion on it. I find that interesting. Um, I also know that there's a policy in place for hostile work environment and harassment, of which thirty-some employees have indicated to us as board members that exists here in Town Hall. And I was easily disappointed when it wasn't a seven-zero vote, um, in an effort to correct that situation. So I understand your frustration when the vote doesn't, uh, fall the way you wish it would. Um, next, I want to just, um, give the voter some information on the election. A reminder that when you're completing your ballot, it is important to remember in a primary election, you can only vote in one party section. If you do vote, uh, for more than one party section, your partisan ballot will be rejected. So if you find that you've made a mistake, and it happens all the time, um, just contact the clerk's office, and we can assist you by spoiling your ballot if you voted for a candidate, um, in the Democratic Party and Republican Party by mistake, and we will issue you a new one. If you require any assistance or questions with regards to your ballot, please feel free to contact us at any time. Also, um, if you choose to not vote by mail and have concerns about voting in a polling location, you can always come to the clerk's office to receive your ballot. You can vote in a booth that is located outside of our office and return your ballot to the desk. It will be tabulated on election day. We have extended our hours July twenty-seventh through thirty, through July thirtieth, which is Monday through Thursday till seven PM, Friday, July thirty-first, from eight AM to five PM, and Saturday, August first, from eight to four, so we can further assist voters who would like to choose to vote in person at the clerk's department. Um, lastly, I would just like to congratulate Megan Brown in my department, um, who just was promoted to election supervisor. She's a tremendous asset to both the clerk's department and to the township. Her knowledge and, uh, experience, uh, will do, uh, will help us tremendously throughout our elections. And also, congratulations to Anthony Poma, who was promoted, uh, in the fire department this evening. That's all I have.
Under supervisor's comments, I just want to remind everyone to stay out of the sun if at all possible. Be sure you stay hydrated and keep cool. It's an extremely hot, hot week that we're going through here. So take care of yourselves, and thank you. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Clerk, clerk, make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by?
Supported by Goodhue.
Supported by Goodhue. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bucenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yep.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes, thank you, and we are adjourned.